Good evening and welcome.
215, one in that red hymnal book, 215, one. I have found a friend in Jesus, he's everything to me. He's the fairest of ten thousand to my soul. And live in the valley of heaven and earth, let's sing together, 205, one. Sing there. Oh, she's quick.
Good evening and welcome.
215, one in that red hymnal book, 215, one. I have found a friend in Jesus, he's everything to me. He's the fairest of ten thousand to my soul. And live in the valley of heaven and earth, let's sing together, 205, one. Sing there. Oh, she's quick. Let's pray together. Father, we do thank you for the goodness that we see in your son, Jesus Christ. The fairest of ten thousand, the most wonderful face. We thank you, Lord, for how wonderful he has been and continues to be. We pray, Lord, this evening that you would help us, that we would grow in our appreciation of your son, Jesus Christ, that you would help us to trust in your word more than we have before. We pray that you would give it to us, hearts ready to change, ears ready to listen, and lives ready to obey. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen. We may see him. Mike. No announcements?
Not really.
Okay. All right, 267. The world was dark in the light of Jesus. 267. I am the world is Jesus. The light of the world is Jesus. No need of the sunlight in heaven, we're told. The light of the world is Jesus. The land is the light in the city of gold. The light of the world is Jesus. Amen. No need of the sunlight in heaven and earth, the light of the world is Jesus. The light of the world is Jesus. Come to the light, to shine for thee. Sing thee the light as the love upon me. What service done, where now I can see. The light of the world is Jesus. Think of the words as we sing the last. No need of the sunlight in heaven, we're told. The light of the world is Jesus. The lamb is the light in the city of gold. The light of the world is Jesus. Amen. No need of the sunlight in heaven and earth, the light of the world is Jesus. The light of the world is Jesus. Come to the light, to shine for thee. Sing thee the light as the love upon me. What service done, where now I can see. The light of the world is Jesus. Come to the light, to shine for thee. Sing thee the light as the love upon me. What service done, where now I can see. The light of the world is Jesus. Come to the light, to shine for thee. Sing thee the light as the love upon me. What service done, where now I can see. The light of the world is Jesus. Come to the light, to shine for thee. Sing thee the light as the love upon me. What service done, where now I can see. The light of the world is Jesus. Come to the light, to shine for thee. Sing thee the light as the love upon me. What service done, where now I can see. The light of the world is Jesus. Come to the light, to shine for thee. Sing thee the light as the love upon me. What service done, where now I can see. The light of the world is Jesus. All right, as we come to the offering time, I just want to remind you that everything that's given tonight is going to go to Brother Pillater. He does have expenses for coming out here, and we want to make sure that we're able to meet those expenses and along with that, be able to send him with an additional love gift above that, letting him know how much we appreciate him being here these days that he's been with us. So, I just want to let you know, if you're right now, you're like, "Oh, I forgot the checkbook," whatever. Hey, you'll have one more opportunity tomorrow night, okay? So, I just want to encourage you on that, okay? Don't feel too bad, all right? All right, let's go to the Lord in prayer. Our gracious Son and Father, we thank you for this evening, and again, we thank you for this opportunity that we could be here tonight. We just ask that you will be the offering. Ask that you bless both the gift and the giver, Lord, and help it to meet the needs that Brother Pillater has, and not only that, to give a love gift above that, and to just show how much we appreciate him for being here with us. We thank you now for all this in your name. Amen.
Amen. That was good, wasn't it? How many want to hear that again? Did. Not only did. That was good. Maybe we could get her to skip church tomorrow night and come to church. They also very, very good canisters here, on the front row. Good canisters there, too. But very, very much a blessing. All right, well, tonight is family night, and we're going to introduce those who are guests tonight. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Mike Pillater. Mike, call me Brother Mike, or Mike, whatever you're comfortable with. And I'm from North Carolina, doing the revival meeting this week, and so I guess you have to listen, because I'm preaching a little bit. But the guests, you could leave, but we sure appreciate you being here and being part of it. Now, how many of you were here last night? Would you raise your hand? Okay, we've got quite a few that were here last night, and many of you were here Sunday, and then we're just glad to have so many here. Last night, we had a very good meeting. We had some coming of Jesus Christ as their Savior. That was very good, and we're thankful for that. And we're having a good time in the school, and those of you that are parents of the kids in the school, or grandparents of kids in the school, thank you for putting your kids in the Christian school. It is an investment. It does cost you money. You could put them in a public school that's free, but you pay to put them in a Christian school, because you see the value, plus you like your kids, you want to see them talk well. And so, it's a good investment, and appreciate all that you do there. And the school teachers here could all make about double, or at least that, maybe triple, if they went somewhere else. That's the truth. But they're doing what they do, because they care about your kids, too. So, thank God for them and for you. I am curious, how many of you are parents or grandparents of someone in the school, and you kind of help with their tuition? And you say, "Kids, get in the car, you're going to school," something like that. Would you slip up your hand if you are involved in, like, kids in the school? You've got kids here or grandkids? Okay, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and we're really, really good. All right, well, tonight is family night. For those of you who didn't know it, it's family night, okay? And so, we had a little contest going, that everybody would try to get their family members out, and before we go into that, did anybody get someone to come, maybe who normally doesn't come, because you said it's family night? All right, and you've got a family member here, or a friend that you're going to call an adopted family member. Anyway, you brought a visitor, someone who doesn't normally come here, and you brought them because of being family night. If you did, would you raise your hand and introduce them if you're not ashamed of them? Okay, so we'll start with Nathan.
This is my dad.
All right.
This is my mother.
Amen.
This is Sammy.
Amen.
This is Savannah.
Man, you've got a big family here tonight, so maybe you're going to get the gift, okay? Who knows? All right, good. Is there anybody else you brought, brought somebody that normally doesn't come, but you brought them for tonight? All right, well, that's good. Now, let's see, how many we have different family units, okay? Now, we'll just do this. If you will have one person from each family unit, even if you're the only one here from your family, like, your teenager, your mom and dad didn't come, well, you still can represent your family then. So, I'm not necessarily preaching on the family, but the strength of a nation is its families. The Roman Empire, a historian said, in the Roman Empire, that when the family began to fall apart and all, then so did the strength of the country. So, it's very important to keep our families strong. So, whatever family unit you have, keep it biblical, and keep it strong, and make it good. And if you pick up your Bible, no matter where you're at in life, you pick up your Bible, you're going to have a strong family. Husbands love your wives, wives love your husbands, children submit to your parents. And anytime we have any fights in the home, anybody ever had one at least once in your life? Okay? Anytime we have any arguments in our home, here's what the Bible says. Only by pride comes contention. So, when it says "only," what's that mean? Oh, conviction. It means "only." And so, whenever there's a fight or an argument, somebody has pride. And so, what we do is, we try to swallow our pride. I had a young man come to me earlier this week, and he says, "Pray for me, there's a lot of argument in our family." And he's not here tonight, so don't worry, it wasn't your kid, okay? Your kid didn't tell him. He should, but he didn't, okay? But anyway, I just said to him, Proverbs 13:10, here's a good verse, and the reason I know is because I needed that for me. Years ago, I put my fist through a wall. I was so crazy. I was 20, 25 or something, and I got really angry at my wife not feeding the baby, and I was tired, and so I was going to feed it. I didn't want to feed the baby. I had fed it the night before, the night before, the night before, and the night before, and she didn't remember it that way. But that's how I remember it. So, anyway, I got in my flesh, and I just said, "Ah, I'll feed the baby." And I got up, I'm embarrassed and ashamed of it, but then again, maybe it'll help somebody. So, what I ended up doing is, I looked for anything I could get, and I decided to hit a door, put my fist right through it, and I thought, "What are you doing?" And I figured, "You better get your spirit under control." And so, I read about it, and I learned about it, and now I'm perfect. It's amazing. But I am definitely changed and better because of God and because of the Bible. And so, whatever it is, if you will pick up your Bible, you will have a better family, no matter where you're at, things can be good, okay? All right, now, let's do this, and see how many family units we have here. So, just if it's you yourself and you, let's have one from each family. If your husband's here, ladies, let your husband be in charge for the second, okay? And we'll just have one from each group stand. So, if you stand at your feet, and we'll see how many family units we've got here. You're going to stand for your family? That'll work. He's the man tonight, all guests. All right, there are lots of family units here. That's great. So, stay standing now. All right, good. So, how many children do you have, buddy? All right, but let's just see how many we have. And so, when I point at you or when I get to you, just kind of work through, and then you just yell out how many you have here tonight, not how many you have in your family, because you may have 25 in your family, but how many are here tonight? And we're going to find out who's going to get this gift. Not that we do it for a gift, but it is kind of a nice thing to do. All right, so how many do you have in your family here tonight?
One.
All right, you have one, but you have the best one. Okay, you can be seated now. Okay, good. And then?
Five.
Five. Okay, giving you a little competition. Okay, all right. So, you can be seated, and then we'll just work our way back.
Two.
Great.
One.
Thank you for coming. Sahi.
Yes.
Yes. One. All right. And then?
Three.
Three. Okay, one, two, where's the third one?
Four. Well, total four.
Four. Where are they at?
Two over there.
All right, I'm just trying to figure out who's with who. All right. We're glad to have you. Thanks for coming. Back here?
Two.
Two. All right.
Two.
Thank you. Good?
One.
Counting yourself.
Two.
Oh, man.
I don't let him read his cards.
It's okay. All right, hang on. Everybody gets a second chance. All right. All right, good.
Two.
All right, two. You and who?
Mom.
Oh, right here's mom. Okay, all right. Yeah, good to put you two together in my mind. Yes.
Two.
And who's your mom? Right here. Okay, great. Thanks, you can be seated. And then back here?
Two.
Two. Wonderful. And then, how many?
Five.
Five. All right, so we've got two with five, several with two. So, I guess what we'll have to do is decide who gets this card, and we'll just arm wrestle for it. All right. All right. So, what did you say? You just want to let him have it?
He probably did. We're always here.
Okay, then, well, come on up here, and give him. In case you don't know, this is actually $50. So, you could probably buy, I would think, at least 25 candy bars for this. Lord bless you. Thank you for doing a good job. All right. All right, so I do want to mention, tomorrow night is going to be, the last night's going to be friend night. Hope everybody will be working hard to come. We're shooting to get out about 10 after 7 and everything. I'm 10 after 8, sorry. And if you have to leave at 8 o'clock, then we'll still like you, but we're shooting for 10 after, and then, but I do want to mention, there are some things in the back table that my wife has painted. This is a small one. Here's a set of cards that she's done, and they all have Bible verses in them. And the whole idea is, it was so nice, my wife started painting about seven years ago. I said, "It's so nice, I'm going to put that on the table if you're okay." And what we sell on the table, and if we make profit, we'll use it for our mission trips. So, I just went to Africa, we saw many people helped, and my wife paid for that with her artwork. So, that's what that's about. So, tomorrow night, friend night, invite somebody, and we'll give one of my wife's paintings for that, whoever gets the most. Tomorrow night, we'll give $50 worth of bark to anybody who would like. If you have at least two guests or more, and you are the winner, okay? So, you got to be a winner to do that. So, but anyway, thank you for being here tonight.
Grab your hymnal, 130. 1, 3, 0. We'll sing. First, second, and fourth of Amazing Grace. 130. First, second, and fourth. Amazing Grace, let's hear thy sound, and save the world from sin. I once was a child, but now I'm grown, was blind, but now I see. Thy grace hath taught my heart to fear, and grace thy name to me. The Lord shall sing, and praise thy name. He has my heart to see thee. Thy glory, thy smile, is holy to me. His word, my hope, is God's. Free, my children, the Lord shall be. The song and song. I'll invite the choir to come up and sing. Be strong in the Lord, and be of good courage, for he is your guide. Be strong, be strong, be strong in the Lord, and rejoice, for the victory is yours. Put on the armor the Lord has provided. Place your defense in his unfailing care. Trust him for thee will be with you in battle.
Trust him for he will be with you in battle, light in your path to avoid every threat. Be strong, be strong, be strong in the Lord, and be of good courage, for he is your guide. Be strong, be strong, be strong in the Lord, and rejoice, for the victory is yours. Be strong in the Lord, and be of good courage, your mighty defender will vanquish the foe. Fear not the battle, for the victory is always his, he will protect you wherever you go. Be strong, be strong, be strong in the Lord, and be of good courage, for he is your guide. Be strong, be strong, be strong in the Lord, and rejoice, for the victory is yours. Be strong, be strong, be strong in the Lord, and rejoice, for the victory is yours. Amen, good job. Read your Bible, then turn to Philippians chapter three. And let's stand together out of respect for God's word, if you don't mind, as we read the text. But they did a wonderful job, and thank you guys for coming in and doing that. Um, a lot of your classmates weren't able to come, or some maybe didn't want to come because they had other things going that they wanted to do, but you decided to come. And thank you for coming. And thank you parents for bringing them. Um, I hope that that just kind of builds every year, that when you have a revival meeting, and they have you guys singing, that more of you come. Like, you gotta tell those guys, "Man, you missed out," because that was pretty awesome, okay? So, uh, I think you guys did a great job, you know? All you parents think they did a good job?
Yeah.
Awesome. Yeah. All right. Thank you for working with them, whoever, who all works with the music, mainly, I guess. Who's, you're mainly working with them? Good job, good job. Man, they sound good. I need voice lessons myself. All right, let's look at Philippians chapter three. Uh, for those who you don't know, uh, this is a revival meeting, it's not just a one-night thing. So, um, I'm gonna be preaching along the lines of revival in a way. Uh, but let's go ahead and look at Philippians chapter three, and we'll begin reading at verse seven. "But what things were gain to me, those I counted lost for Christ? Yea, doubtless, and I count all things but loss, for the excellency of the knowledge of Christ Jesus my Lord, for whom I have suffered the loss of all things, and do count them but dumb, that I may win Christ and be found in him, not having my own righteousness..." And I think he's saying, "I don't get to heaven by my righteousness, which is earned by obeying the commandments of the laws, but then that which is through the faith of Christ." And the Bible says that we don't get to heaven by our, our good deeds. If there's anybody who's not sure you're going to heaven, you don't get to heaven by earning it. God says it is a gift, and if that's confusing to you, that's what the Bible says. It's a gift. The good things we do cannot get rid of the bad things we've already done. If I murder somebody, and then I do a lot of good things, I say, "Wait a minute, I helped my neighbor." He was in the hospital, and I cut his grass for two weeks and didn't even tell him. I just did it for him, and I didn't charge him anything. The judge would say, "Well, that's a good thing, but you murdered somebody, you're still going to jail." The good you do cannot get rid of the bad you've already done. So God says, "We do not get saved by works, not of works, lest damnation be both." But he says, "By grace are you saved through faith, and it is a gift." All right, so here the apostle Paul is saying, "I am found not in my own righteousness, which is by keeping the law, but by that which is through faith of Christ, the righteousness which is of God by faith, putting your faith in Jesus." Now, once we put our faith in Jesus, look what apostle Paul talks about. Verse ten. "That I may..." what?
Know him.
Know him. "That I may know him." All right, let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we pray for your blessing on the word tonight. We know, Lord, there's much that needs to be accomplished in a short week. And you know who is here tonight? Who was here last night? Who will be here tomorrow night? Who's in the school chapels? Who has personal needs, they're going through, and struggles? And Lord, all of this needing to be addressed, impossible by a man, but very possible under the direction of God. And so Father, I ask that you help me to empty myself, that you would lead tonight, tomorrow, and complete the work that needs to be done. In Christ name we pray, amen. Thank you, and you can be seated. Paul, Paul the apostle said that, "I want to know God. I want to win God." That is basically a close relationship with God. Now, if we look at this, and we've talked about knowing God, I will very quickly say that nobody's gonna probably preach one sermon that'll get you close to God as you could possibly be. It can't be learned in a class, can't be learned in one service, but it can be experienced. And this is the pursuit of the apostle Paul, that I may know him. Now, the Bible speaks a lot about us being people that know God. There are other terms like walk with God, my God, not just his God, my God. There's this term, the friend of God. And that's all talking about somebody really knowing God closely. And then there was Moses, who was called the man of God. And then other passages you read, it says, "See God." "The person who is meek will see God," I think is in the Beatitudes. And then it says, "He that cometh to God must believe that he is, and that is a reward of them that diligently seek him." So coming to God is another way of saying, "Know God." In Revelation, it says, "Sup with him, and he with me." "I'm having a meal with him, I'm supping with him, and I'm fellowshiping with him." And so the whole idea is we can know God. So lots of terms refer to this idea of us actually knowing God. Now, the first thing that I want to draw attention to, I won't take long on this, is the possibility of knowing God, can we, can we actually know God intimately? The answer is yes. Now, in Second Chronicles six, very quickly, when Solomon dedicated the temple and he prayed, he said, "God, fill this temple." And then he says, in the Bible, "The heavens and the earth cannot contain you." I understand this. Will God literally dwell on earth? And that was in Second Chronicles chapter six, and in Second Chronicles seven, real quickly, it says that the Shikayna glory of God, big word, but the glory of God came down, and it filled the entire temple. And when it did, and that cloud was there, and everything was bright, here's what everybody realized. God's presence is here. Now, another time, when Moses got the Ten Commandments, Moses was told, "Tell everybody to stand down below, wash their clothes, and wait, and then only you come up." But when he was there, you remember, if you read that passage before, that the Bible says that the mountain shook, and a fire came down, and a voice came from heaven, and everybody got afraid. And they said, "Moses, you go up and talk to God, we don't want to die. And then you tell us what God said." And the point I'm simply giving is this, when they saw the mountain shake, and they saw the fire fall, they said, "His presence is here." Now then, as they got older, and, and, and as they continued, the Bible says that as Egypt was pursuing them, maybe it was a little bit earlier, but when Egypt was pursuing them, it said, "A cloud came down between Egypt and between Israel, and then they saw his presence was there." And then later, every day, God led them by a cloud, a light, white cloud in the day, and at night, it was a pillar of fire. And the whole idea is simply this, God was affirming, "My presence is with you," okay? Now, I'm not trying to be dramatic, I am simply saying, God's presence can definitely be with us. Now, the Bible says, um, that you have to be saved first, but then, once you are saved, the Bible tells you and me that we have to walk with them and keep the sin out of our life, have a prayer life. There are things we need to do to get closer to God, but I'm simply affirming that we can be closer to God. Now, the Bible says this, "What, know ye not that your body is the temple of God, which is in you, which you have of God?" Now, he is saying that God literally comes into us when we get saved. Now, somebody says, "Well, I want to get the Holy Spirit." Now, I understand that we might get it in a little bit more powerful way, where he works through us. But technically, anybody who's saved has Jesus in them. Can demon be in somebody, yes or no? Yes, then he, the Holy Spirit literally can be in you. Now, what that means is you can know God. I can be close to God. It's not just something that we dream of, it's not something we talk about, we can actually know God. He wants a relationship with us. In fact, the whole purpose that Jesus came to earth, remember, Romans five and verse ten, that God sent Jesus Christ to reconcile us to himself. Now, reconcile means we were separated, and he brings us back together. Now, in application, there are some of you here that might not know, and I'm just kind of talking, and I, I don't know everything I'm gonna say, but I know the idea. There are some of you tonight that you don't even know that when you die, you're gonna go to heaven. What God did was he sent us on Jesus to die on the cross, so then you could be forgiven, and you can go to heaven when you die. So the whole foundation of Calvary is to reconcile man to God. Years ago, there was a story, don't know if it's true, but someone said it is. There was an old man who had two adult sons, and these sons had become mad at each other, so they wouldn't talk to each other, they hated each other. When the man was about to die, they called for his sons, and one angry son was on this side, one angry son was on that side, and the dad wanted them to get together. So before he died, he reached over and he took the hand of one of his sons and put it on his heart, put his hand over his heart. And he reached over, took the hand of the other son, and put it on his brother's hand. Then he grabbed both of them, and just held their hands together, and he held on until he died. Now, when the man died, the boys knew, the adult now men, knew what dad was trying to do. And they lifted up their eyes, knowing he wanted them to get the relationship fixed. They made eye contact, that's all it took. They ran to the end of the bed, they hugged each other, and they embraced and said, "Will you forgive me?" And they fixed the relationship. Now, it took a dying dad to bring those two alienated sons together, follow me? Now, the illustration of God sending Jesus. When Jesus was on the cross, so to speak, he reached up, and he took the hand of God the Father, and he took the hand of my Pelletier, or of us, if we'd been saved, and he brought us back together again. And that's what Jesus did, he came to bring us back to God. So, my point is, even young people, you, you need to know this. The whole foundation of Jesus' coming and purpose was so we could know God again, and have a relationship with Him. So everybody follow me on that? Now, God wants us to not just exist, and wants us to not just know about God, he wants us to actually know Him, and to walk with Him, and to be close to Him. Now, let me ask you how you think you're doing spiritually? All right, now, first, I won't be here for a short time, but I first want to ask you, do you believe that you are a hundred percent sure you're gonna go to heaven? If not, God wants you to. Secondly, if you do know that you're one hundred percent sure you're going to heaven, do you feel like you are close to God? Like, you know Him, He knows you, and like, you're really close to each other. When you pray, He listens, and when you have a need, you go to Him, and you can sense His comfort is there, His strength is there, and He is your life. Or do you feel distant from God? What God wants is that you're close to God. And I think what a good definition of revival is, is when a man's relationship with God gets fixed. It's not just you start giving more in the church, you go to church more, you read your Bible a little bit more, and you feel better about yourself because you're doing better. That's not it, it's you really get closer to God than you presently are. That is a revival. Now, with all that in mind, I'm gonna go fast. I want to talk about, it's first possible to know God. The second thing I'm gonna talk about, he says that I may know Him. I want to mention, there are stages to knowing God. Now, the one who said that I may know Him had several stages in his personal journey. Here was stage number one. He was very much aware that God existed. How do we know? Because he was a Pharisee, and the Pharisee knew that God existed. And he wanted some kind of relationship with God, he knew God existed, he knew about God. He had read a lot about God in the Old Testament. And so he fasted and enticed, and he kept all the rules, trying to know God, but he didn't know Him. He just knew about God, that God is holy, God is righteous, God is the judge, God's the creator, and he knew all about God. Now, later on, he came to know Him personally, when he accepted Jesus by faith. But then even beyond that, he's now saying, "I want to know God intimately, not just know about Him, not just know Him as my Savior, I want to be intimately close with Him." Now, how close are you to God? Now, these three stages are very important. There's a stage about knowing about God, secondly, knowing God personally as Savior, and thoroughly knowing God intimately, and the goal for each of us is to know God intimately, okay? And again, we're not gonna be able to go too long, I'm gonna be getting you out at ten after seven, okay? Now, if I were to go to a foreign country, ten after eight, sorry. If I were to go to a foreign country, and I were to deal with people that never had a Bible, where would I start? I was thinking through this, and I thought, "Well, I'll start where the Bible starts, Genesis one, one. In the beginning, God." And I would be telling people, "There is definitely a God." Now, how can I tell them there definitely is a God? I would say, "Look at creation." And I would give evidences of the sun, moon, stars, birds, trees, how that tree puts off its exhaust, and we breathe it in. And we put out our exhaust, and the tree breathes it in. And all of this being fine tuned. They say that the earth is moving sixty-eight thousand miles per hour, nineteen miles per second. And it is such a fine-tuned creation, as I told the teenagers the other day, you can tell the exact minute the sun's going to come up, twenty-two years from now, to the minute. Now, you would think something moving at sixty-eight thousand miles per hour, nineteen miles per second, would be completely out of control, but it's not. It's more accurate than the best watch you could buy. Now, that is evidence there is a God. Now, then I think about the United States, and if I were to try to influence the United States, and this is kind of what I'm doing, if I were to go to public school, you know what I would do? I'd start with this, "There is a God." Why? Because we've been attacking that idea. I went to Florida, and I preached in a Christian school, and you know what I started? They have five hundred students? I started with, "There is a God." And the Bible is his book. And the Bible is his book, and we need to get right with God. I was here earlier with the teens from this church on Saturday, and you know what I talked to them about? "There is a God." Why? Because we've got so many people saying there's not one, that we need to get aware of this reality again. Now, we've got to, before we can ever get to know God, we've got to accept that there is a God. Now, step number two, I would say then, there is phase number two, knowing God personally. Now, the Bible teaches that we all can come to know Jesus as our personal Savior. Now, if you do not know that you're going to heaven, you can know. These things are written, that you may know that you have eternal life. Now, you might be somebody who says, "I want to go to heaven, I hope I'm going to heaven, but I don't know that I'm going to heaven." You might be somebody who says, "I'm 50% sure, 75% sure, 90% sure." Well, God wants you to be 100% sure you're gonna go to heaven. And if you're not 100% sure, you might be okay with it, but God's not. He wrote, "These things have are written, that you may know that you have eternal life." And what did he write? That God so loved the world, that He gave His only begotten Son, Jesus, "That whosoever believeth in Him should not perish, but have everlasting life." Now, there's a difference between knowing about Jesus and truly believing in Jesus. There are some of you maybe that know that Jesus died on the cross. Some of your kids might know that Jesus died on the cross, some of your men might know that Jesus died on the cross, but you really have not gotten to where you believe it is for you. You've got to believe it is for you, or it doesn't help you. Nobody can ever get to heaven just by knowing there's a God. No one can ever get to heaven just by knowing He died on the cross to save men from sin. The devil believes that Jesus died on the cross to save people from sin. The only way that you get to heaven is you've got to believe on the Lord Jesus Christ, and thou shall be saved. Now, what's the difference between believing and believing on the Lord Jesus Christ? Believing on the Lord Jesus is different than knowing that He died, it is putting your trust in what He did 2,000 years ago to save your soul. I give this illustration. Imagine that there's a cavern, and it's 20 feet across and 200 feet down, and we're gonna jump it. Are you ready? Now, the first guy jumps and he goes out 6 feet. We go, "Good job, great job." Spot on the bottom of the cavern. Next guy jumps and he goes out 9 feet 4 inches. He beat the first guy by 3 feet 4 inches. We go, "Great job, whoa, did you see that? Woo, way to go, great job, woo." You tore him up. Spot on the bottom of the cavern. Next guy jumps, he goes 3 feet. Should've been on a diet. And then the last guy jumps, and he goes 19 feet 11 and 1/2 inches, it's just a half inch short. Now, what happens to the guy who's just a half inch short? He falls down and down and down, and he's just as dead as the guy who only went 3 feet. Now, none of us are going to be able to get to heaven on our own. The Bible says, "All have sinned and come short of the glory of God." Now, if there's any confusion, "Am I good enough to get to heaven?", let me clarify it. No, none are righteous. No, not one is righteous, according to the Bible. So, we're not gonna get there on our own. Now, the way that we get there, according to the Bible, is by faith. Now, by grace, are you saved? To faith, here's faith. Now, instead of jumping across on our own and trying to get there by our good deeds, imagine this. Imagine that there's a bridge here, and it spans the 20 feet into 200-foot cavern. Now, I can believe that bridge will hold me, but that's not Bible faith, this is Bible faith. When I walk out on the bridge and I deposit all my way on it, I'm walking now by faith on that bridge. I don't have a rope tied around me to a helicopter in case the bridge breaks, or I wouldn't be trusting the bridge. Stay up there, just in case the bridge breaks. I don't have a parachute on my back, just in case the bridge breaks. Got to be ready, in case this doesn't work, why wouldn't be trusting the bridge? So, you gotta cut the ropes of everything else you're trusting, the birds are married, cut the rope. Your good deeds, cut the rope. And the only thing you put your trust in is Jesus Christ. Now, that's salvation, and that's when you become somebody who is born again, you've heard the term. And when you are born again, the Bible is teaching that you know God personally. He becomes your personal Savior, and that's where you can say, "I am the Son of God." Now, what son doesn't know his dad if he lives in the same house, okay? Now, here's what he's saying. "As many as receive him, to them give you power to become the sons of God, even to them that believe on his name." Now, the moment that you put your faith in Jesus, you get a relationship personally with God, or you can say, "Abba, Father." Now, where I'm headed is that we want to know God intimately. Now, there's knowing about God, then number two, there's knowing God as personal Savior. But then, there are people that go all through the Christian life, and they never have this awakening. "I can know God intimately." Now, great men of God, who actually probably believed in God, were not what they later became. For instance, the apostle Paul, the one we're talking about, that I may know Him. He knew about God, but then later on, he became the greatest missionary in the world. Do you follow me? Now, I think about others, like Abraham was called the friend of God, right? But initially, he didn't hardly know God, and so God appeared to him in Genesis 12, and he says, "Abraham, get thee up from thy country, from thy father's south, so the land that I will show thee, and I will make it thee a great nation, and I will make thy name great, and in thee shall all families of the earth be blessed." So, here Abraham became greater and closer to God. Moses, Moses. "Put out thy shoes from all thy feet; the place where thou standest is holy ground." So, here's Moses, and he's not close to God, and what I'm saying, he later on got pretty close to God, am I right? Now, where are you right now spiritually? Are you okay with it? I think a lot of times when we're okay with it, that's why we don't grow. But when we recognize that there's more than what we are experiencing, then we want more. Now, God wants us to be close to Him, intimately close to Him, and that is what the apostle Paul is saying. Now, being intimately close to God, the Bible says in Colossians 2 and verse 15, that we can actually be complete in Him. Now, complete in Him. I don't know, we don't have all the time I want here, but let me just throw some ideas out. How many have ever heard that somebody talks about their spouse, "She's my completed"? Have you ever heard that? You know what? I said that, "You just are my lion to my wife," and she said, "I could do without you." Now, it wasn't that abrupt, but basically, they were talking, it was sort of like, "I could do without you, I'd be fine." I say, "What?" She said, "The only person I need is God." And you know what I said? "No, you have to need me, because God said you have to." And she said, "No, I really technically don't have to have you, and you don't have to have me." I said, "Yeah, we do. Bible says that you're my helpmate. It doesn't mean you're my slave, but you're my helpmate, and that I'm supposed to love you, and you're supposed to love you." She said, "I do love you, and I know you love me, but if something ever happened to you," she said, "I could be still fine, as long as I have God." You follow me? And you know what? She's right. And technically, the Bible says, "We are to be complete in Him, and we can be fine as long as we have Him." Honestly, honestly, we can. Now, we are to love our wives, we are to love our husbands, and frankly, when I have God, I can actually be a better husband for my wife. A person who's following God will be a great wife for her husband. Now, we can't do anything about the past, but we can do something about the future, and we can fix things by saying, "I'm gonna do from here on the thing that God had me to do, and with God's help, I'll be the better man, the better woman, the better child, the better person." God makes us better. But here's the thing, we can be completely fine, get this, if we know God intimately. Not just if we know about Him, but if we know Him. Not just if we're saved, but if we know Him, like Abraham knew, the friend of God, like Enoch knew. Enoch walked with God and was gone, God took him, because he wanted him to be with him in heaven. Not saying we should walk with God so we'll all die young. No, but I'm saying it was an intimate relationship with God. Now, how does that intimate relationship with God come about? You have to spend time with God. Another thing, you have to end other relationships that keep you from God. Number three, you gotta have faith that God is there. He that cometh to God must believe that He is, and that He is a reward of them that do and jump to seek Him. Now, very quickly, just throwing these thoughts out, because we, again, aren't in schedule. You have to end relationships with other things that are keeping you from the relationship with God. Now, I wanted to date my wife, and you know what I had to do to date my wife? I had to break up with another girlfriend. And I had to end my relationship with her before I could ever start my relationship with Becky. Now, once you're married, that's a little different, you better just fix your relationship. But right then, I had to end my relationship with her, that girl, so that I could pursue a relationship with my wife. And here's what we gotta do. We have got to end the relationship, the love affair we have with sin. Now, some of you might want a closer relationship with God than you have as a teenager, but you're gonna have to end your love affair with sin if you're gonna really walk with God. Right? And when you look at what you get from God, you'd say, "Man, I love God a whole lot more than I love that sin." And because you want a relationship with God, you gotta end a love affair with sin so you can have a relationship with God. Now, sometimes, you gotta end your love affair with money. Now, as an adult, there's nothing wrong with making money, I hope you make a lot of money. But friendship with the world is empathy with God, love not the world, even the things that are in the world. It says, "Be careful," it says, "The love of money is the root of all evil, which some have been coveted after, have earned from the faith." It's okay to be wealthy, Abraham was wealthy, I'm not telling you it's wrong to be wealthy. But I'm saying your love affair with money has to end if you're gonna be really in a love relationship with God. Now, what is it that is keeping you from God? Is it your love affair with a couch or sleeping in on Sunday morning? I don't know what it is, but something is keeping you from having a deeper relationship with Jesus if you're just distant from Him. What is it? Your pride? You don't want to look like a girl or something? As a man, we say, "Well, men don't get relationships with God, that's a woman thing." You are wrong. Now, so, other words, first, we've got to end our relationship with things that are keeping us from God. Now, number two, we have to spend time with God. Now, do you want more of a relationship with God than you presently have, okay? Think about this. I have a friend, was my best friend when I was in 6th grade, his name was Mike Steele. And Mike Steele and I were like this, when we were in 4th grade, we were like this, 3rd grade, like this, 5th grade, like this. And 3rd grade, we were going to get together and invent something very amazing. Our plan was, we were gonna invent this big box that had a record player and a TV. And a radio. And a phone. And we were going to make a lot of money, but somebody stole our idea, and now they have these cell phones. We came up with that in 3rd grade. So, this was our idea, but anyway, we were close, we would spy on other people. And I know it sounds real creepy, when you're in 3rd grade, you just think that you're like in the FBI, okay? So, we would spy on our friends, and we would spy on our parents, and we would spy on when they're talking in another room at the church and stuff like this, okay? Now, we were like this, but you know how often I talk to Mike Steele now? Maybe 2 times a year, maybe once every 2 years sometimes. And though I would consider him a friend, and he would consider me a friend, and we are very close, I really love Mike Steele, I really, to be honest with you, I don't even know how many kids he has. I'm not even sure what his wife is called, but her name is, I know it's Mrs. Steele. And I do know that she's a nice lady, she's a Christian, she's got a very nice personality, but I don't know her name. And you know why? I haven't spent time with him lately. See what I'm saying? And then when I spend time with him, I remember it, but then I forget it. And so, the order to have an intimate relationship with Mike Steele, I had to be back in that, every day, we're gonna go and invent something, we're gonna go do something, we're gonna spend time together. Now, how are we gonna get intimate with God again? We're going to have to spend time with God, just like you do with your children and with your spouses, okay? Now, the translation of that is, we have to carve out time to know God. Now, I'm nobody that is saying that I'm the example for everybody, but I am saying this. I grow every time I pray. Now, I will, for me, since times when I feel a little distant from God, I'm a preacher, I'm traveling around, and I'm preaching to everybody, but I don't want to pretend to know God. I want to know God, and there's a difference. So, what I do, I have my favorite place to pray, and I like to go out in the woods behind my house, and I have a certain spot I like to sit, and I look up and I can see the creation of God, and I'm loving it, okay? And the heavens declare the glory of God, the firmament of truth is hand you word. And I get alone, and I pray, with no cell phones around, except I have a cell phone, and I put it on mute and silent, and then I set it for 30 minutes, and then I spend 30 minutes praying with God. That's my drink of water. That's my oxygen. I don't even shut my eyes, sometimes. Sometimes I'm sitting, sometimes I'm laying on my back, sometimes I'm not charismatic, but I raise one hand, sometimes I raise two hands, I just say, "God, you're amazing, you made that tree, you can do anything." And I begin to pray, and I get myself closer to God. Sometimes it takes 5 minutes, 10 minutes, before I'm down to 30 minutes, I'm really feeling refreshed, okay? Now, I set my clock for 30 minutes, do you know why? I know. So that you can make sure that you don't overlook the important things you need to get to in the day. And you don't lose track of time so you don't get your important things done. No! The reason I set my clock for 30 minutes, Nathan, see, I know you've got a heart for God, I set my clock for 30 minutes because I don't want important things that I've gotta do to keep me from the more important thing of being with God. Follow me? We have got to spend time with God if we are going to get close to God. So, do it. Now, the other thing we need to do is have faith that He is with us, and we walk in the continual awareness of the presence of God. Now, knowing about God is different than knowing Him as Savior. Being on my way to heaven, do you know you're going to heaven? If not, you're in great danger. I can't cover everything in one sermon, but I try. But one thing I need to do is let everybody here know, if you don't know you're going to heaven, you are in great danger. You need to know, not hope, that you're gonna go to heaven. And we have a way to show you, not us, but from the Bible, we say, "Well, I don't care what you say, I don't need it, what I say doesn't matter." But I do think that you would care what the Bible says, I believe you would. And the Bible says you can know you're gonna go to heaven. And we can take the Bible, though we're not the smartest people, we don't know everything, but we do know how to show you how to be sure you're going to heaven. And if you could be 100% sure you're gonna go to heaven, wouldn't that be good? Good news, you can be. And then after that, we all need to pursue, not just saying, "I know Him as my Savior." I know Him intimately. And it's an exciting thing when you know God intimately. It works in your life in so many wonderful ways. I'm not saying that I'm Moses, but I think about some of these people like George Mueller, and George Mueller would pray, and God would listen to him, and he had 50,000 dated de- And George Mueller would pray, and God would listen to him, and he had fifty thousand dated definite answers to prayer. Fifty thousand. And if you do a little math, if he was in the ministry for fifty years, that means that God answered an average of a thousand prayers per year. That was so dramatic, he wrote them down. Do a little more math. That's three hundred and sixty-five days in a year. Thousand divided by three hundred and sixty-five, roughly three answers to prayer every day. So dramatic that he wrote them down. And you know what I feel like? If I get three answers to prayer in one year, I think I'm Moses. But these people walk with God. And I began to see, God does answer prayers when we have a relationship with Him. Well, we don't wanna use God. We serve God. He doesn't serve us, we serve Him. But it is pretty exciting when He answers prayer. I went into, I had a need on a mission trip I was going on. I remember praying, "Lord, I need eight hundred and fifty dollars." My wife said, "Just put it on the credit card." I don't normally do this, but he did. And so, I put it on the credit card, and I said, "Lord, we believe you want us to go to Haiti." So, I'm going, "If you don't want me to, you tell me not to. I think you want me to," so I bought the tickets. And so, we don't do that in credit, but we did. And so, a week before the meeting, I didn't have any money to pay for that, but a guy walked up to me, a teenager, and he said, "Brother Mike, you've been a blessing." And I shook his hand, he shook my hand. I said, "What's this?" I felt some paper in my hand. So, I looked at it. There's a fifty-dollar bill, a teenager. I said, "What's that for?" He said, "You've been a blessing." I said, "Really?" Well, praise God, I'll use it for my mission trip. So, if you like my preaching, Nathan, this week, expect a fifty-dollar bill. But anyway, later on, a man shook my hand, he had fifty dollars, somebody else a hundred. And the date before I left, they had seven hundred and fifty dollars. So, I needed eight hundred and fifty. I'm not making it up. I was in the airport, and I was literally thinking, "God, at the moment, God, you did it again. I needed eight hundred and fifty dollars. You gave me seven hundred and fifty. I can take care of the other hundred when I get home." And at the moment I was saying that, in the airport, I hear, "Man of God..." Miami Airport. It's a big airport. So, I hear it again. "Man of God..." And I'm thinking, I'm a preacher, but I'm not Moses. "Man of God..." And he's getting a little closer. And so, finally, I kinda sheepishly turn around, and I didn't wanna go, "Here I am." I turn around, and he goes, "Man of God." And he walked up, and he said, "For you." Shook my hand, there was a one hundred dollar bill. I was just saying, "Lord, I have eight, seven hundred and fifty. I only need a hundred. I can do that when I get home." And I said, "What's this?" He said, "For you." And he walked away. Now, there's a little background to that, and the background is, I met him about an hour earlier, and I said, "Sir, you wouldn't happen to be from Haiti, would you?" He said, "No, why do you ask? I'm from Nigeria." Nigeria is where he says. And I said, "Why do you ask?" He said, "I said, 'Well, I'm going to Haiti.'" And he said, "Why are you going?" And I said, "For ministry." That's all I said. He said, "God bless you, brother," and he walked away. An hour later, "Man of God..." Now, why do you think that he wanted to help me with that hundred dollars? Who do you think told him that I needed a hundred dollars? And here's the amazing thing. How did he find me in Miami Airport? Now, when I see things like that happen, it just is encouraging to see God. And there are many other things, but it's not about what we get from God, it's that we get God Himself. And so, are we intimate with God? So many things we could talk about. We've got a short week, but if we get out of here thinking, "Man, I want to not just know about God, I don't wanna just be saved. I wanna know God intimately." And do this, break up with the world, break up with sin, and end your love affair with sin in the world. And instead, carve out time to be with your wife, because you love her, even if you're busy. You build a relationship. But carve out time to be with your kids, even if you're busy, because you value them. Carve out time to be with God. And it'll work. Let's power hits. Heads, bow, and eyes closed. Question one, how many of you would say, "I do know Jesus as my Savior. I may not be perfect, but I do know that I'm gonna go to heaven." You don't have to answer me, I understand that. But it kinda helps me to see the need. I'm not your dad, and as I said last night, I'm not your boss, but I'm here to try to help people. So, I'm gonna ask you, if you're comfortable, how many say, "I know I'm gonna go to heaven when I die. I've got that settled by Jesus." Would you slip up your hand if you're sure of that? This helps me to see it. If you're not, don't be embarrassed at all. "Oh, I thank you, thank you, thank you." You can put your hands down. Good. I saw some that did not raise your hand. I appreciate you being honest. Let me ask. Do you know Jesus personally? The Bible teaches that you have got to come to know Him as your personal Savior. You cannot just know he died on the cross. You have to receive Him as your personal Savior for it to help you. So, is there anybody here who would say, "I don't really know I'm going to heaven, but I do know I don't wanna go to hell, and I do see I need to receive Him as my personal Savior, and I want to. I need to get to know Him personally as my Savior, by faith." Like I gave that illustration, you don't get there by trying. You get there by taking the bridge. The bridge is the cross of Jesus. You have to put your trust in Jesus. So, is there anybody who would say, "I do not know I'm going to heaven, but I want to. Pray for me. I want help." I won't embarrass you. I'll just pray for you, without saying where you're sitting or your name. If that's you, just slip up a hand. I'll see you, put it down, and I'll include you in a prayer. "I don't know I'm going to heaven, but I know I want to. Pray for me." All right? How many of you would say, "Brother Mike, I know him as my Savior, but I don't feel close to him, and I know I can be closer than I am, and I wanna carve out time so I can spend time with him, because he means that much to me. I wanna know God intimately. I wanna get really close to God." You can do that as a teenager, you can do it as an adult, you can do it as a child. Is there anybody here? "I'm not as close to God as I really wanna be, and I sense that I need to take some definite action to get close to God, spending time with Him, carving out my time to be with Him, so I can get close to Him." If that's you, would you slip up a hand if you got the point, you need it? God bless you. Good, 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 good. Great, great, good, great. Amen. Good people getting better. Good. Amen. Good, great, good. Carve out that thirty minutes. Do it once a week. It'll grow you. Every day, a little bit. And I guess I'll ask one other question. Is there anybody who would say, "I have an affair that I have going on with sin?" I'm not talking about with a woman or a man. But there's a, there's a sin that I just keep dealing with, and I need to God. I need God when I need that sin. And just pray for me that I could kill this thing and end this sin, so I can have a better relationship with God. If that's you, would you slip up a hand? Pray for me. Good, good for you. Good there, good there. Good. Anybody else? Wonderful. Father, you know who we are, and you know where we are. And I pray, Lord, that you use these truths to bring us closer to you. Thank you for leaving tonight, and help us to value you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Because we are out of time, I think that we can take care of things on our own in time at home. God bless you, and come back tomorrow, or we will really talk badly about you.